We're good?
Yeah.
Alright.
I'm going to come out.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your patience. So, welcome to the December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, regular meeting of the Town of Easton, Massachusetts Planning and Zoning Board. In keeping with an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, this meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. Attendance by board members will be remote, and remote attendance shall count towards a quorum. The meeting will be broadcast live and recorded on eCAT. To use Zoom, follow the link on the agenda, which can be found on the calendar, the front page of the town's website. While board members and applicants will be on video and audio, public participants will join the webinar as attendee, meaning they are muted with no video feed from them. During the public testimony portion of the meeting, members of the public can be recognized by using the raised hand function or the Q and A function on Zoom. If joining by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Board members are asked to announce themselves when making a motion and a second, so it'll be clear to the audience members and minute takers who made the motions. All votes will be by roll call. To ensure we have a quorum, we will now have a roll call. Gregory Strange, present. Deborah Balseric.
Present.
Peter Duchesne.
Present.
Amos Kadham.
Present.
Robert Stetson.
Present.
Alright, thank you all. And, Amos, since Chris Anderson has resigned from the board, you will be sitting in as a full member for this continuous special permit. So, hearing. So, we have one item tonight, and that is a continued public hearing for four sixty-four, four sixty-six Foundry Street, special permit for multifamily, and a site plan endorsement. If someone wants to present or get us up to date where you're at, name and address for the record, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott Farrier, J K Holmgren Engineering, in twenty-four Pearl Street, Brockton, Mass, here along with Joe Grimaldi from Fusion Investments for four sixty-four Foundry Street. So, we just wanted to give the board a quick update and perhaps have a quick conversation. I think when we last left you folks back in the beginning of November, we had a couple of outstanding issues. One was, we had just recently submitted a new landscaping plan from the landscape architect that we felt satisfied concerns that the board had brought up previously about the clearing that had been done by the earlier owner, primarily on the back property along Greenwood Village, both their roadway and the Greenwood Village building. So, this new landscaping plan, we hope, addresses that concern. The other issue that we had left with the board was, the board wanted to make sure that we were settled with the Conservation Commission, and had closed everything out with the commission before you folks made a decision. So, we kind of left it at that, but at the very end of the meeting, we had a really quick discussion on the number of affordable units that our project proposes, and, you know, the percentage and the benefits that that would have towards the town's affordable housing stock. And, just to go over the numbers quickly, what we have before you folks tonight is, as we've had since the summertime, since June or July, when we submitted this revised layout, is a twenty-unit building. And the proposal has been for two of those units to be affordable, so obviously a ten percent affordable. And it was questioned at that last meeting. We answered it and kind of left it at that. We really didn't have any back and forth. So, we just wanted to to get back to the board, I guess, and make sure that everybody's comfortable with that number. Mr. Grimaldi has done a lot of, like, work in research and crunched all the financial numbers and could get into a greater conversation with you folks if that was necessary. But we just wanted to make sure, before we take the final step with conservation and come back to you folks, that everybody is clear on what we're proposing, and in fact, everybody is comfortable with that.
Okay, thank you. So, I'll jump in here quickly, because at the last meeting, what had happened is Peter had questioned, asked if all the units would count towards the S H I, to which we know they wouldn't, if it was only twenty-five percent. And also, at the last meeting, I think it was at the last meeting, or subsequent to, or maybe it was two meetings ago, you know, we learned, if you recall from the beginning of this project, early on during our preliminary discussions, you know, we had talked about, okay, what would the mitigation be? You know, there's every other large-scale or medium-scale residential project in town that's had some form of linkage. And we're saying, maybe there could be a park out there or something, but that, you know, that didn't really materialize. And then we, and I think a lot of us, we thought it was a good idea, came up with the very first meeting, to have that sort of blinking light crosswalk, similar, or is it Stonehill, across the shahs? Of course, we were informed, I guess, a week or two ago, that the D P W says that's not allowed, or they won't allow it, or whatever. There's, I don't know, I wasn't involved in any discussions, but it... So, just personally, as a voting member, I'm like, okay, why? And as we know, this maximum for this is four units. Or, of course, you could cut the land up a little differently, but, you know, it's, we put that sort of open-ended, or more is allowed by the planning board. So, just as a single voting member, originally, I was like, well, if we get some of these things we talked about, great. But they've kind of all fallen by the wayside. Unfortunately, I think, you know, these presentations have dragged on a little bit, and it's really just, it's almost been more like site plan review. I haven't been told as a member why this is such a great project and why we should give such a density bonus. So, following up on Peter's question last week, you know, I had a quick conversation with Stephanie, or last meeting, I should say. And I said, you know, you know, I'm not very happy with, I don't think there's really any linkage here or mitigation. So, maybe maybe we try to get a twenty-five percent number and then count this all towards the affordable. Then I could, again, as just one voting member, I'm like, alright, I can sleep it now, because we know the Town of Easton's not really keen. The residents, many of the residents aren't looking to have more apartments put in here. We've had quite a few, several hundred over the last few years. And that doesn't mean that this is a bad project or a good project. It's just, you know, as a board member, I want to be able to answer folks. And I know, word got back to me, well, that could only happen if we added four more units, or this or that. So, I'm, you know, that's where everything is from my end. Just personally, again, for me, I just being upfront, I don't, you know, I don't know why I would be voting for such a larger number than is allowed by the bylaw in its base form. I, you know, there's no, but, so I need to be sold on that. And I'll be done now, and if any other board members have any thoughts or questions, related or not to what I said, irrelevant, but just throw it out there.
Well, I think you hit on one of the, one of the issues that I wanted to talk about tonight in regards to this project, which is the linkage piece. And I guess my question, and maybe it's just a different way of asking your question, Greg, is, you know, is there something slightly larger that might get us over the hump in terms of the engineering analysis that was provided to us? And justify, you know, the type of crosswalk that I think a lot of us had been talking about? And that's just a question, I, you know, I'm not an engineer, so I don't, can't say I hundred percent understood the study, but I think I understood the findings. I guess the two questions that specifically, maybe this is a question for Scott, is, number one, how close is this project to triggering that analysis, to triggering a crosswalk? And number two, did the analysis that was that was considered by the town, or put together by the town, did that include the development directly behind this proposed development? In other words, or was it just a freestanding analysis of what does this development justify? So, those were my comments.
Sure, if I, just, I can answer those, I think, really quickly, Mr. Stetson and board members. I think the feedback we received from D P W was basically the guidelines for any site at all in the town, and in fact, in the Commonwealth, that would allow a crosswalk, just a crosswalk, to be placed on a public way. And to be honest with you, this site doesn't, isn't even close to hitting any of those criteria. Even if we, the original first project, the mixed-use project with the retail, the residential, even that wouldn't have hit any of the threshold. There's a whole bunch of threshold, you know, in regards to traffic volume, speed, all kinds of different issues, and this just doesn't even come close. So, it's, I think as far as the D P W is concerned, it wasn't even worth bringing up. Certainly, in this project by itself, at this point, it's twenty units. You know, I think the, again, to be honest, I think the feeling is that the twenty units wouldn't necessarily justify it. The one thing we were, that we were proposing, was to build the sidewalks from our site all the way down to connect to Five Corners. Right now, from Five Corners, heading heading down Foundry Street in an easterly direction towards us, the concrete sidewalk ends before the bank. So, we would be looking at extending the sidewalk across the bank's frontage, across our site. So, we would at least be providing, you know, a viable sidewalk to get you to Five Corners, to get you to the pedestrian light in the crosswalks.
Was that sidewalk proposed on previous plans, or is that a new?
I have a question.
Hold on, Peter asked the question first. Hold on.
That has been on the plans, Mr. Duchesne.
Okay, so if I look at the last plan that was prepared from a couple of weeks ago, at least, it'll be on there. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Amos, go ahead.
Yeah, on the report from the D P W, it says that one of the thresholds for allowing a crosswalk is it shouldn't be another crosswalk at a distance of less than, I think, three hundred feet? Is the crosswalk at the corner three hundred feet or more? What is the distance, you know? Because they put that as a no because of that reason only, because there is a crosswalk in proximity.
Agree. It's, it is more than three hundred feet, but that's one of the reasons, not the sole reason. It's just one of the criteria that would have to be met, or that would exclude us in this case. But it's just one of the many criteria, but we are graded in three hundred feet, to answer your question.
Okay. That's not what they put on the report. They put a table, and the three hundred feet, the crosswalk was on that table, and that's not true. I was a little surprised, because my feeling was that it's more than three hundred feet.
Any other board members, questions or comments?
I think at the beginning, when we did the site visit, I kind of questioned the high density of this apartment building. And I was appeased to the certain point, because we talk about some of the units being counted as affordable. What I, so I should echo what Greg said. It doesn't leave a good feeling when so many apartments, and they're relatively small. They don't meet that requirement. That is something that the town really needs.
Any other board members?
Hey, I'd just like to say that I feel like we've been talking about and reviewing this project for a while now, and that's a good thing, because it's had an opportunity for people to weigh, the community to weigh in, and for us to, you know, go through some design changes and so forth. But I do feel like a lot of these things that we're talking about, I guess maybe, it sounds like, Greg, like, we were a little hopeful that maybe some of the items, some of the concessions were going to come through, but I do feel like it seems like we're, not that we can't change our mind, but a little late in the game now to be, you know, like, these issues have been present all along, I think, you know, in terms of a residential project, not a mixed-use project. You know, it being a lower density, because we didn't necessarily want a high-density big apartment building. So, I don't know. I'm just kind of talking out loud.
Well, I guess, just to respond to yours, I mean, I guess I look at this a little differently. First of all, regardless of the density, I just look at what's allowed by the bylaw. Okay, so this is, this is four times what's allowed by the base form of the bylaw. So, in going into this, we talked about, and this going back to preliminary, before this even came to you guys, one of the first meetings with several town employees, we were talking about walkable neighborhoods. You know, we always talk about that. Oh, we're going to have this crosswalk going to shahs. So, now they got pulled out at the last minute. So, that's just a little discouraging. That's fine. If I, you know, Mr. Farrier just talked about, oh, it wasn't even close. Well, it would have been nice to have one of the many engineers involved in this project. I don't necessarily mean you, Scott. Said, hey, this isn't going to happen, because we've been talking about this for darn close to a year. And so, you know, I thought that was going to happen, and I thought, maybe we'll get a little bit of a park going. Yeah, we got a detailed landscaping plan. That's fine. I mean, eventually, I'm done, you know, I can lead a horse to water, but, you know. And so, I'm like, alright, well, why are we why are we going to give such a density bonus? And I thought, well, maybe we can get a, and Stephanie and I talked about this, and said, hey, just three more units. Maybe we can get them to go, you know, for what they're going to save not doing the, you know, I've yet to see any mitigation proposed, frankly, other than the sidewalk. So, and compared to comparable projects in town on a by-unit basis, it's not even close monetarily. And so, I thought, well, maybe we can take a little stab and see if we can make twenty-five percent work. And, you know, I guess, I know I got some correspondence back that it doesn't work, and I understand. This has to be, this has to be a, this has to be a business. It is a business, has to be, have to have those choices to make it profitable. But I just look back and from giving our service to Easton, I'm kind of, so Deb, these, I don't look at me as bringing this up at the last minute. I look at, much of this was removed at the last minute. I'm like, why? So, tell me why we should allow all these additional units? I'm not saying that to you, Deb. I'm saying that, you know, no, this hasn't, if you read our bylaw, we should go back before the next meeting. It is, it's broken out, the processes should go through, the preliminary design, and what we're looking for. And that's really never been addressed. We've just, and I've brought this up a few times. This has kind of just been handled as site plan review, where we walk through, oh, we revised this curb detail. We put some plants here. Instead of saying to us, and more importantly, to the Town of Easton, why this is an important project. I'm not saying it's not an important project, but what, you know, why should we, you know, be doing this? So far beyond the four units allowed? So, that's, and it's, yeah, now it's time. We've been talking about this a long time. Still waiting to get it wrapped up with CONCOM. You know, so Peter brought up the affordable. So, I look at it as, okay, we have a, we have a correspondence from the applicant saying that he'd need four more units, total of twenty-four, to do a twenty-five, to make it, to have all the units count, to have the twenty-five percent affordable. I have five units. And so, I'm like, okay, well, this came up at the last meeting. So, is that something that interests the board or not, or do we just want to keep it the way it is? Or, I'm looking for thoughts on this, so we can find out, should we, should we close this thing? Take a vote in the next meeting? Should we? Although, I don't really want to close this till the CONCOM's wrapped up, but what do you guys want to do with this?
Yeah, I mean, so at the first meeting, I...
This has been a long process. I'd like to wrap it up too, but I'm not hearing anything.
Yeah. At the first meeting, I, you know, I asked, when we realized there was going to be no commercial component, you know, I asked how this project, you know, fulfills the stated goals in the, you know, first two paragraphs of the new bylaw, of the bylaw that, you know, applies to this district. And, you know, we haven't really heard that. No one ever replied. And, you know, we mentioned this and that, the other thing, and we just keep circling back, and we have the maximum number of units with nothing to really, really show for why that is a good fit for this area. And, you know, and, you know, it's not a direct precedent, but it's, it's the first, you know, one of the larger projects to come to us here in this new section, and we haven't really heard anything to say why this is, you know, why this is the way to go. So, let's see what you have to say and how you make one of...
Sure, I could just respond to a couple of those things. First thing, as far as the density, I'm not in, maybe I'm missing something, but it keeps, I keep hearing that four units is the maximum allowed. I think the bylaw says, it says right here, chapter two thirty-five sixty, the max, the number of units is one per five thousand of lot space, up to a maximum of ten per lot. So, and again, we've discussed this way back in the beginning. We've got two parcels of land. So, we talked about, instead of having ten units on one parcel, ten units on the other, if we combine the two parcels, eighty-one thousand square feet divided by five thousand square feet, gives you sixteen-point something, sixteen-point-four units.
What does it say about commercial, what does it say about commercial?
Well, actually, we didn't have that talk. You guys came in with a mixed-use project that really didn't work. There was not nearly enough parking. It was jamming everything on. That was the thought. And we sat at a table with the town planner and with your attorney, and we said, maybe we should look at, you know, I think I said, I said, maybe just go all apartments on this. We could look at this district-wide. You know, not every parcel is made to be mixed-use. This is a small parcel. But now, when you start to remove wetlands in the resource areas, now your numbers go down. So, there was never, you know, it was like, you could present this in a way, but this, you know, but there was also talk, we seem to conveniently forget that from the get-go, I've talked about how the precedent has been set for leakage payments in this town up at the Foundry, up at, you know, both faces of Avalon. That was always in play, but we never really got there. And to Peter's point, there really hasn't been a narrative that talks about this project. You guys have just come in and presented engineering, and that's fine, but we've, you know, this isn't at the last minute. We're not, but, you know, but Deb, you know, things have changed here at the end. But basically, everything has been pulled away that we had talked about and were led to believe maybe would be part of this project. So, I'm just, and I'm just one person. I know I talk a lot, but I'm like, okay. Well, as one person on this board, why am I going to vote for this project?
I think just to...
How are you going to sell me?
And again, way back in the summer, when we had our site visit, before we made the decision to officially scrap the mixed-use and go with this, we talked about, with a couple of the board members that specifically brought that question up, the bylaw specifically says mixed-use. How can we, how can we allow this project not to be a mixed-use? And we specifically spoke about it at that meeting and at the public hearings. This, this site is a little bit different, where it's right on the outskirts of that zoning district, for one thing. It's not right in the middle. It's right in the outskirts. And the fact that it was directly across the street from a giant retail plaza that already has plenty of retail space, the fact that our space didn't have retail, you know, might not be a deal breaker. Again, we're on the outskirts, and we're right across the street from a giant plaza. So, we did have discussions, like I said, at the site with everybody and at meetings. We've discussed that as the reason, and at least the justification in our mind, why we could propose this as a residential project only, not a mixed-use. So, we haven't skirted that issue. We've talked about it with you folks on a few occasions.
Well, that's, the issue I was referring to is mitigation. I agree with all the other points. I'm the one who brought them to the table. I've been talking about it for months. But, you know, why, tell us why this project's so good and should be done. Beyond, and look, we can sit here, I don't, I'm not going to break out the engineering numbers. It's, you're asking for substantially more units than is allowed. You know, we put that god-awful, open-ended line at the end, which I wish we hadn't, frankly, for situations like this.
But I think we're allowed sixteen-point-three, and we've got...
Well, whatever, whatever, Scott. So, then tell me why you want four. I'm going to disagree with you, but you know what? You still haven't told me why you should get two units, you know? You haven't sold anything. You've come in here, this isn't site plan review. This is a special permit application, and you're supposed to sell it to us. And I've been asking for months, both on TV and off.
Okay.
You don't act like I'm asking for something at the last minute, or I'm changing. I haven't. But I'm tired to talk about this project too. I want to vote it up or down and move it on. But we have a responsibility, we have a responsibility to the Town of Easton.
I'm not saying that at all.
To meet our bylaws, and to meet the goals and objectives of the town through the master planning process. So, I wish you guys would strap them on and do it.
I'm trying to. I'm answering specifically the questions that the members are asking. So, when the members specifically ask about the density, I'm trying to answer that specific question. When it's asked why this is justified not to be mixed-use, I'm answering that specifically. I'm looking right here at the staff report that's dated in August and updated in October, and it specifically mentions how we, all of the requirements of your special permit, all the conditions and all the issues that we should be addressing in our special permit. They're all right here in writing that the staff has put forward. So, all of those answers, and you might not agree with the answers, but all of those answers are here and have been here since August.
Right, but we don't have to give the density bonus.
Understood.
We don't have to give a special permit. And, you know, everything we've talked about has pretty much not materialized for one reason or the other, yet everything else has changed, except for the number of units. Do you agree with that? Do you see, can you understand that point of view? That everything else has gone away, except for the same number of units?
I understand the crosswalk is...
Can I jump in for a second?
Name and address for the record, please.
Joseph Grimaldi, Fusion Investments, seven Blue Heron Lane, Easton, Mass. I've sat through this meeting tonight, and I've been working on this project for almost two years now. Me and my team have literally done every single thing that's been asked for us, okay? We've had at least ten probably informal meetings up in Easton. We had a plan for mixed-use, okay, that I spent thousands and thousands of dollars on, okay? Trying to do what's good for the town. If you guys look at that, that lot, the way it is now, it doesn't look good. It looks horrible. I'm an Easton resident. I live right down the street, okay? I'm trying to do something better for the town, and I've been doing everything that's been asked of me. Okay, I've spent thousands of dollars. We had a mixed-use, okay? We agreed to the crosswalk. The crosswalk is not our fault. As far as mitigation, we would have done that. We didn't take that away. And as far as this so-called park, from day one, with whatever has been suggested, we have done, and we will continue to do that. Whatever type of park that the board sees fit, we can do. I mean, it's not a huge area for a park, and I don't know like what type of park anybody wants. I keep hearing a park, and I keep hearing things are getting taken away. Alls we've done is done what everyone, whoever we've met with, we've done what they've wanted, okay? I think this is going to benefit the town immensely. So, as far as affordable housing units, alls I asked for, okay, I wasn't even at the last meeting. I heard there was, someone had mentioned, obviously it was Peter, about additional affordable units. This came up at the last meeting, two weeks ago. No one's ever mentioned this before to anyone, okay? We thought we were done with the twenty units and the two affordable. Okay, so we've had discussions the last three weeks. I went to my bank. I said, can we do this? With all the rents, what it's going to cost to build? And it's just, with the additional, having twenty units and five additional affordable to make it twenty-five percent for the town, it just wouldn't work. So, I put it out there, if we could do four more additional units, have a twenty-four, which is only going to add twenty-five feet to the building. People are going to drive by. They're not even going to notice the difference. And that would put it into the twenty-five percent, so there would be six units that would be affordable. It would help the town, and the whole project would count. But it's just frustrating to me that I hear that something different every time I come. I haven't said one thing on any of these things. And anyone can say anything they want, but I've done everything that's been asked of me, and I will continue to do that, just to make this work for me financially and for the town. I want to make it work. So, I just, I just need direction, one way or the other. That we, we thought we were done with the twenty units and the two affordable. This came up two weeks ago. As far as the crosswalk, we would do that. We would, whatever mitigation that anyone suggests, I'm open to it. So, I just, I, I'm hearing these things keep getting pulled and pulled. We're not pulling anything. I haven't pulled anything. I haven't pulled anything. If anything, I've added and I've wasted tons and tons of time and money. And I know you guys as the board is probably tired of this project. I'm tired of doing this. I'm tired of spending. All my time and energy and money to try to make that area look better. It's only gonna help the area. Um, it it, we're not talking about sixty units. We're talking about twenty and I'm fine leaving it at twenty. But I just, it's, it's just, I get different. Explanations and different things every time we go to a meeting, whether it's formal, informal. I get different, different requests. First, it was mixed use. It's all we wanted was mixed use. And now, and then it switched to 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 residential. So that's what we did. And now it it seems like. We're getting blamed for changing things when when we haven't. We're just doing what what everyone's asked us to do. Or anyone that we've met with. So I I just wanna put my two cents in there and say that. I I just wanna help the town. I wanna make it look better. And of course, you know, it's gotta be financially viable because. I don't wanna get something approved that's not gonna get financed. It it just, it won't make sense. So it's just gonna sit there. And and you know, I it it doesn't look good for the town. It doesn't look good down there when you drive by there. It's not a great area. We know there's another project in town that the same thing's happening too. I'm trying to work with everybody and I know my team has. To try to get this resolved, but it seems like. We get blamed for everything. Like, I I've done everything, everything I'm supposed to do.
Well, first of all, Mr. Grum, no, no, I I didn't hear anybody blame anybody for anything. And this, this isn't easy. Just, you know, I I understand you look at it as you're gonna put up a new building regardless of the density. So it's the best thing in Eastern. You know, I mean, that that was a nicely wooded lot. I know before you bought it, they came in, they 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 looked like they, uh, they, uh. Hit it with firebomb.
Yeah, it was really.
Look at the bylaws that were written and what we've, you guys haven't done everything we said. I begged you guys to go to a three story building. So that we could have a smaller footprint, so that we could get a park out there, because I was trying to tie it into the MBTA zoning. But you didn't wanna spend the money on the elevator. That's fine. So you wanted to keep two stories. So the building's spread out. So when you look at the site, once you remove the parking. Once you remove the building, once you remove the buffer zone in the resource area that can't be touched, there's a very small area. It's got a path through it. It's got a fire pit and you put some trees up back after I asked about a dozen times. It's fine. It it wasn't, it wasn't a park. That's. That's, that's the cost of doing business. You know, if you wanna develop twenty units, you have to dress it up a little bit and get a little privacy between. We didn't tell you to go for for, um, mixed use. We told you what the bylaws were. We told you what was possible. You guys came in with mixed use. We were for it. But you know, like any businessman, you're trying to zap it out. So that had what, twenty eight units plus the mixed use? It was too much for that site. Everybody that looked at it agreed. Even some of your team off the mem- off the record agreed. So we said, we, you know, okay, maybe we should go all residential. You know, and that was done at sort of an executive level with the chair of this board and the director of planning. Because sometimes you have to try to push things in a way before it gets to a board. Um, and then when it came to the board, they were surprised and said, you know, we talked about it. Um, so, you know, there's no blaming here tonight. This this isn't easy. We're trying to, we're trying to to, um, to work on this. We we try to tweak the building a little bit because we, we wanna keep Eastern special. We we don't have a lot of business zone land.
I agree.
Thus our property values need to stay high because we're always gonna be a residential tax base.
I agree.
And so, um, you know. You you you've worked with us. You haven't done everything we've asked, not even close. And but we really haven't asked that much. But, you know, because to me, if you wanna meet the bylaw the best and you wanna make this board excited and vote this out really quick. I would have gone three stories for all the reasons that I already said. But with that, that ship has sailed, you know? Um, and no one's saying you have to go to to twenty five percent affordable, but I'm trying to help get this project approved for you. But I saw things that we were told we're gonna get as part of mitigation and there's been no discussion. There's been no talk of money. There's been, you know, there's been no, you know, that we 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 all thought that crosswalk was in there from the get go. And I understand, I didn't say you guys got rid of that. That came up at the. That's really discouraging to me because that came up, that's been there from the get go. So why that wasn't talked about at a staff level? And I, all due respect to everyone, I'm blaming anything on you, but I just, unfortunately, the only time we get to talk about this stuff is on TV, so we have to say it. So it 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 kinda pisses me off at nine months up the road, we find out about that. Um, because because that doesn't do us, any of us any good, because as we all sit here, this isn't easy stuff. We have huge pressure. We get calls from residents all day long. They don't want any apartments. They don't want apartments. So that's nothing against you. It's nothing against the property. It just. What what have we added in town? Something like fifteen hundred units in ten years, you know, people. People say, what about diversified housing? You keep saying we're gonna do small houses. Where are they? So we, you know, so there's lots of things that. People that aren't on these boards don't know the the pressures that come on us. So we're trying to.
I understand.
Get the best projects we can.
And I've been trying.
So that's what it is and.
Like I've been trying myself to 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 do the the same thing. As far as mitigation, I'm open to anything. I I don't know, you know.
Seventeen thousand five hundred per unit. That's what everybody else is paying in town, to the best of my knowledge. That always brings the silence to the room. Um, I I, here's what I think we should do, because we're not gonna, we're gonna knock, we're not gonna get this here and, you know, we all wanna get on with Christmas. Um, I think you should wrap up with Concom because you know what? If if for some reason, if you add twenty five feet to a building. You know, I mean, I'm I'm kind of tired of being held hostage constantly by by Concom. And that's not you guys, but we're the head of the planning pyramid. It's the planning department. Um, and those, you know, that stuff should be set first and then come to us because otherwise there's there, you know, substantial changes and we have to go through it again. And how can we decide on amenities like parks and landscaping features if, when we don't know what can be touched and what can't be touched? You know, we brought this up three or four months ago. And then so, so I think from here, I think you guys should should go back. You should wrap up with Concom. And you should come in next time and sell your project and and then we'll close public hearing and we'll vote it up or down. We can, everybody can move on with their lives. Stephanie, go ahead.
I I just wanted to say the holdup in conservation isn't the layout of the design. It's, um, a few items on stormwater that are really more, um, kind of. They're a little more than record keeping, but it's not anything that is going to change the design. And I think that the reason that the applicant, um, asked the conservation commission. To continue tonight's hearing, which I was told by the agent, the board was ready to close on. Is because they wanted, if there were any changes coming from the board, this board. Um, they didn't wanna close out the conservation commission and then have to go back with changes.
Sure. What I'm trying to avoid though, in all honesty, is we had a project recently that this board approved. And after it left us and 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 we waited till Concom voted on it, but then when the decision was written. Items, um, substantial cost items came up that were not, that, uh, were never expressed to this board. Um, and that substantially diminished the mitigation package that we had all agreed to. So that's a process that I don't think is is fair to this board or any of the boards involved. I don't think it's fair to the. Residents of Eastern and I'm loathe to have that happen on my watch again. So that's why I want Concom wrapped up, as I've told you in private many times. Recently, I want that wrapped up before we vote on things from now on because there's just been too many substantial changes after the fact.
And and we were gonna do that, um. Greg, it was just that we wanted to have one final meeting because the whole discussion came up about the additional affordable units. Or else we we we'd close Concom. Like, so I guess at this point, that's what we have to do next.
Yeah, I mean, certainly wouldn't be, you know, if for any reason you change the footprint of this building, it certainly wouldn't be the first project. In fact, that's that's gonna happen during contract document phase anyway. It always does, you know? And I I think and and I might be wrong, but just as chair, I'll say this and you guys can let me know and I'm I'm addressing my fellow board members now. I think we should continue right now. I think the board members should give this some thought over the next couple of weeks till our next meeting. Uh, I think the absolute applicant should give this some thought and, uh, and come in with the. Your 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 best projects for us, but that might be the project you have right in front of us. That's fine, you know, that's fine. And then we can, uh, we can discuss it. We can close. Um, if again, if Concom's wrapped up and and then we can, we can vote on it and then we can move on with their lives. What do the board members think about that process?
Fine by me. I'll present a motion to continue. Stetson.
Kevin, second.
Uh, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor? Greg Strange Eye, Bob Stetson. Deb Ballseric. Peter DeShane. Thomas Kem.
Hi.
All right. We'll see you guys at our next meeting.
Could we go, could we go for the second meeting in January if we've gotta go to conservation?
Sure, yeah, whenever, yeah, you can work that out with Stephanie, that's fine. Thank you, gentlemen. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
All right, meeting minutes. Peter, what do you got?
Nope, they looked all right. I read them on when Stephanie emailed them on Thursday, so. I can make him, make a motion to approve the minutes.
Peter always edits much less as we get closer to the holidays. All those in favor? Strange Eye, Bob, Robert Stetson.
Hi.
Deb Ballseric.
Hi.
Thomas Kem.
Hi.
Who'd I forget? Peter? Peter DeShane?
Hi.
All right. Uh, Chair's report. I have nothing to report, but I'll throw this out just for for thought for next year, kind of what we were just talking about. Um, you know, when when we did the, uh, Burns Village zoning and and we threw those things in or more units is allowed by the planning board. I wonder if that was actually a good idea, because it's, it doesn't seem like this board really, um, and it was, it was members of this board that I recall bringing it up. Certainly wasn't me that wanted that, but it doesn't seem like we're all super happy or comfortable with that, so maybe we should change that up, just a thought.
Definitely wasn't me.
Stephanie, do you have anything? Any director report?
Uh, no, I would kind of echo that. I think that if the board want to keep that in there, maybe be more. Provide a little more guidance on what type of project would qualify for that level of a special permit, because I think it's. I I, I understand what the board is asking of the applicant. I'm not sure that giving them two more weeks on this pass.
This is, I, this is what I think happens, is that we say, okay, it's a special permit. So, you know, we don't have to approve anything. It's it's kind of all up to us.
Yeah.
And they always come with close or at the maximum, right? So it's just, we just know what's gonna happen.
Right.
Almost like, I don't know if the pro forma is based on the maximum and that's the issue here and we're just not given the right kind of guidance at the beginning. Or if that's just the nature of of the way things work.
There were no discussions of pro formas or finances at the beginning of this. That's not our job, you know? Um, and, um, but I think this is our concern when we were doing the zoning, that open ended. Clauses like that sometime can be difficult because, I don't know, I don't know about you guys, but me as a as a zoning board member, I I like to have. I like it when there's something that I can sort of root my my decision or base my decision.
No, you're right. So where we tied the, um, say the additional, um. Density say to the to the smaller zone with the maybe historical component, that actually puts some. Kinda put some, applied some guidance to it, right? Where this was just a little more open ended. And so whether it's pro forma or not, whatever they're thinking, they see, oh, that's what we can get. And that's just where they start. That's. Where they start their baseline or whatever you wanna say, however you wanna call it. So that's, I think that's the difference, okay?
And I I, yeah, I would, I would agree, Peter, that that has worked very, it seems very well for the historical. And it's very clear what, um, they need to do to get that bonus. And I don't, it's, it's not, there's no clarity. This is really very open ended. On the one hand. That could be to your advantage, but this demonstrated that it makes it very difficult. At least for the applicant to come in with something, it seems that the board would be interested in approving.
Well, but I think the one, you know, uh, that was obviously a highly negotiated, um, provision. And I think it recognized the kind of. The other side of things as well, which we're hearing out of this applicant and we've heard out of others, which is the the financial realities of trying to build. You know, buildings like this or or do projects like this. And the the additional incentive, I mean, and to be able to finance it, particularly with conventional lending. Like this applicant so clearly has, you know, you've gotta, you've gotta hit certain, uh, debt service coverage and, you know, everything else. That all all the other things that I'm sure everybody on here is probably more familiar with than even I am. But I think that the the addition, I mean, I would have preferred, I think everybody knows this, to have something more, more clear. And straightforward. I I just think that, you know, my my preference would have been for something a little bit higher in in on the density side. And I know that I may have been out in left field on that one. Um, but I think you you see the financial realities of it in this very project. And, um, you know, I, so I think that having the language as it is right now, while. It's a bit unsettling because it's not particularly clear on what we're supposed to do on projects like this. I also think that. It kinda makes sense, given the the divergence of opinions that we have as a as a board. And and the financial reality, I mean, look, things have gotten a lot worse in the development. Look at where interest rates have gone. But I don't think it's, you know, I I don't think it's unreasonable for developers to be asking for additional density in order to be able to finance these projects.
I I just to piggyback on that a little bit, I think. One of the questions that I think I ask myself a lot is, you know, is our projects that are coming before us? Would I prefer that project or would I prefer there to be nothing or for something to remain? As is for an indefinite period of time in the hope that. Something better will be there or that it'll just exist exactly the way it is in that current state. And I think that. Um, because it is so expensive to develop or renovate projects. The reality is, is that a lot of times no one does anything. And so, you know, I don't know. I think that speaks a little bit to what you were saying, Bob, but yeah, I think it's something for us to all. Think about and. No answers.
If it was easy, we wouldn't be making the big bucks. What I brought up, you know, it's funny, we're talking pro formas and this and that. You know, we get a. Be careful here. We, we get a wide range of developer, of of folks developing. Um, in Eastern. We get a lot of people and I'm not talking about anybody in particular. I'm not talking about the, we get a lot of people that aren't. Developers, right? You know, in the past, who come from different vocations. Um, our bylaw, bylaws, the way it was written for this, uh, and. Construction costs for all of all the Bob, 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 Bob brought up, really valid points. Screen for this to be a three story building with a reduced footprint, okay? You know, so, yeah, you have to put an elevator in, but you're reducing your hardscape, you're reducing your. Uh, foundation costs, you're creating a more efficient cubic footage building. And you're doing, now now we're tying it into Eastern. I I don't care how many units somebody has. If it's, if it fits, if it's a good project, great. I never look at it as a number of units. I look at how it works. And I I want if, you know, to maintain Eastern's rural character and I'm always, you know, I I'm pretty open about it. I think we've gone really far with apartments and we need to be careful. We need to start looking at some smaller, single family housing or connecting housing as well. And apartments, 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 apartments. Um, and, um, but if we're going to do them as apartments, well, let's. Let's make sure we can include families, because I don't want, I get nervous that people come, they live in the town for three or four years in an apartment and then they move on. You know, I don't buy it. So many developers say, no, they come to the town and they fall in love and then they build the house. Now, when your rent's thirty five hundred and your mortgage is one point eight million, I don't think that plays out too often. And and that's what a thirty two hundred square foot house now goes for in Eastern, is one point six five million and up. So the 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 reality, the costs of things are, that's the reality of it. So I I wish, um, there was more. Family style units in the apartments. I wish there was, you know, of of any project. I'm not speaking specifically, but. You know, and I wish there was more green space because the Eastern's rural character, that's what we're always talking about. Otherwise, we're just gonna end up like every other state highway. That's going to have a million drive-through donut restaurants and, um, and a bunch of apartments. And it's, you know, and they're all gonna be from the same style and it's not gonna be special and it's gonna knock down our property value. And and we need to keep our property value high because we are the only one of all of our budding towns, we're the only one that doesn't have a highway. Um, and that hurts us big time for all the business we've talked about. Anyways. Um, so it's tough. I wish, I wish our bylaw was being taken advantage of. Unfortunately, it isn't.
Can I just throw out two couple of, you made a lot of really good points. One, one thing that I I'd love to have known about. This project is how many additional units would have been required in order to make it financially feasible to add that. Elevator, because I think that's a terrific point. Um, and and the other piece, and this is gonna be very unpopular, I feel like. But I, but I think one of, one of, one of the alternatives that we ought to just. Consider, don't even think about it hard, but just consider allowing more, you know, uh. Duplexes and and, uh, residential, uh, homes like that.
No, absolutely. No, absolutely, yeah.
You know, I think, I think we ought to make that easier.
Yeah.
Than, than even we have, and I know we've been pretty good about it.
Yeah, no, I mean, I look at, I've been trying, I've been, I went to a couple seminars in New York, looking at how can we do dual accessory structure, basically a second house on a lot. It's tricky because we have so many different types of, but that's what we have to do, there's no land left. Costs aren't going down and people, how are people going to afford eight hundred thousand? Never mind one point six, maybe it's, you know, it's, it's crazy. Um, so I agree with you, I mean, honestly, I look at some of these projects that come before us and everybody thinks automatically, because I get it, it's the bottom line, go, go multifamily, let's go stack them. Um, you know, sometimes some, some really nice, uh, you know, the compact neighborhood, you know? Um, and I, you know, look at the mitigation, uh, that we got for forty-four units. And now I look at the mitigation, which is zero so far for, for, for half that, twenty.
Twenty, yeah, no, it's a good point.
Um, anyways, all right, that's good. Um, we'll cut it off there. So, um, just give all these things some thoughts. Those of you that celebrate Christmas, I hope you have a great one. And, uh, and Stephanie, thanks for getting the computer fixed, whatever that was. And happy new year all and, uh, we'll see you in a couple of weeks on the night, the night.
Yeah, we're trying to adjourn.
Second, Stetson.
All right, all those in favor, Strange Eye, Stetson.
Aye and happy holidays.
DeShane?
Aye.
Ballseric?
Aye.
Kenham?
Aye. Happy holiday.
You look so much like a pilot, that's all I can think of.
Merry Christmas, happy new year, everybody.
Merry Christmas, happy new year, happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, whatever y'all celebrate, have a, have a great one and we'll see you in a few.
Good night.
Thanks.
Good night.